Tuesday on October 3, 2017. Would you kindly hold the board?
Trustee Johnson? Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Ramfro?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes. And would we all kindly stand for the salute and flag?
Stand forward, you two.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, foundation under God and individual with liberty and justice for all.
If we could remain standing for a moment's silence for what happened in Las Vegas and also brothers and sisters in Puerto Rico. I thank you. People are adding more and more islands to the course. We agree that there are lots of people who suffered through the hurricane season this year and all of them are in our prayers. Now, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session. We won't be long.
Go, second.
Deputy, uh, Deputy Lieutenant Attorney would like to enter into executive session at your number 3, 2017 Board, Trustee Smith, and would like to take it to you, Mr. Chief. Who made the motion? Second? Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Ramfro?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes. Okay, and don't so inclined while we're gone. If you want to prepare your questions for doctored items only, you may do so at this time. Regular questions are asked in a normal fashion at the end of the meeting. You open the mic session. Thank you.
Come out of the executive session, please. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Ramfro?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes. I remind anybody, if you have a question about the darker light of the season, I'll go right forward. And I just want before we get started...
We have to make a motion about this discussion.
Oh, my, no, my fault, thank you.
Does the board wish to approve the matter that was discussed in executive session?
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Ramfro?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes. Okay, just a couple of announcements before we go on to the items. I guess we'll do the reports and then go to the questions. But I just want everyone to know that George Cipron and the Hispanic Civic Association, Incorporated Village of Hempstead, are cooperating in an effort for relief in Puerto Rico. The hurricane damage there is extensive. There's no electricity. They're looking for bottled water, non-perishable food, hygiene essentials, toiletries, mosquito repellents, and the like. The nation can be dropped off here at Village Hall or at the Hempstead Hispanic Civic Association, which is at 236 Main Street. To have more information or need more information, 292-0007. Also, we'd like to announce that at 5:30 tomorrow, there'll be a vigil at the Executive Building in Nassau County in Garden City regarding what happened in Las Vegas. So it's 5:30 tomorrow's vigil for that tragedy in Las Vegas, Nassau County Executive Building. Okay, thank you, Brian.
You want to address that first, maybe? What you got for my part?
Do the questions before the...
Yes.
Not a problem. Okay, I have one question. So, A, Patricia Moore, if you approach the mic.
I'll be very quick.
Yes.
There's a couple of tax up-sharing issues and they come up every meeting because it's denied by the process. And the thing that I notice about them is that they cover about six years or more. It's go back to 2006. And every time that happens, what presumably happened was in 2006, somebody challenged their assessment and then it didn't get resolved and then it didn't get resolved and it didn't get resolved. And so meanwhile, the legal department has been trying very hard to settle the issue. And ultimately, they're saying... And then village ends up paying money. It covers like a long period of time. I would suggest that Hoxford University has a business school and a law school where there are probably students who would like to do an internship of some kind. There must be some way that that process... The assessor is obviously drowning in the petitions for review of their value. And there must be something procedurally that could be done to get things done so that you don't end up with a big pileup like that. And I would suggest that somebody should contact Stuart Menowitz, who wants to help or the dean of the school. The dean of the School of Law now is a new person who is a fellow judge and is very competent. It would be interesting. See if somebody could set up a meeting with an intern, with the assessor, with the law department, and with the treasurer because all of them would be affected by any kind of expeditious, you know, research. Let them loose and find out where there are places along the way where some type of intervention would save us a lot of money and not cost us a lot of money.
Okay, thank you. I might mention that in some cases it's the strategy of the attorney so the seven years go by before they actually bring it forward. So it's not necessarily backlog. But thank you very much. And to remind everybody, five minutes left. You don't mind on all your comments. Thank you.
The Small Business Saturday. Whereas the government of the Village of Hempstead celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 28.8 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States and responsible for 53% of net new jobs created over the past 20 years. Whereas small businesses include 48% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. Whereas on average, 33% of consumers holiday shopping will be done at small independently-owned retailers and restaurants. Whereas 91% of all consumers believe that supporting small, independently-owned restaurants and bar is important. And whereas 76% of all consumers plans to go to one or more small businesses as part of their holiday shopping. And whereas the Village of Hempstead supports our local businesses that create jobs whose our local economy and preserve our neighborhood. And whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday of Thanksgiving as a Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Mayor Don Ryan, Mayor of the Village of Hempstead, to clear Brooklyn, November 25, 2017, has Small Business Saturday and urge the resident of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses emergence on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year.
Yeah, I'd like to take this opportunity too to congratulate everybody involved, particularly the Deputy Mayor Perry Pettis for our Business Recognition Day last Saturday. The weather didn't cooperate, but everybody did. So it was a great success. And many businesses were real thrilled to be recognized. Some of them have been here a long time. One of them goes all the way back to just past the Civil War. So we have businesses that have been here quite a while. And some of them are newer, but we recognize them all. Deputy Mayor, I want to congratulate you and the people that work with you for that Saturday.
Presentation of a serious report by the publicaries of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead. First, we have Electric Board Christian Castillo.
Good evening, Mr. Ramfro. This is Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Castillo.
Thank you for having me so soon. Okay, we have a regular meeting. Top part of the building department. We have the inspector of the building department, electrical, Mr. Conzdi, Mr. Dimitri Magari, and myself, Christian Castillo. We have two persons taking the part one of the exam for the 2017. Jeffrey Mariello from Long Beach, top part two, and will take part on October 17. And George Thomas from Johncass will take part one in October 2017. One person passed the test, the first part of the test. Deputy Jeffrey Mariello from Long Beach. And subsequently, he will take part two, like I said before. We discuss the continuing location for the National Electrical Code and the Village Code. Also, we discuss the electrical license exam scoring, which we'll be double-checked in the future for other persons to take the test. And that's just about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Recommission of Parks Commission, Vanessa Henry.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor Ryan, Deputy Mayor Pettis, Trustee Rodriguez, Ramfro Johnson.
Evening.
The Incorporated Village of Hempstead Parks and Recreation Commission monthly meeting was held Tuesday, September 26, at Kennedy Park from 6:45 to 8:30 p.m. The meeting was called to order by the chairperson and the minutes from our... Excuse me. July meeting was reviewed and a motion to accept the minutes. It was a motion to accept the minutes and the motion was second. Our meeting in August was canceled. Was canceled. In attendance were Commissioners Joy Shackley, Renee Cordura, Jeff Spinter, Ricky Cook, and Otis Watts, Trustee Lash Rodriguez, and Supervisor Ruby Roperson. Commissioner Randy Harrison and Superintendent Joy Sanders was absent. The Commissioners reviewed eight letters from the community requesting the use of either the facilities at Hempstead Parks, the use of the Showmobile or the Village Bus. Three requests were approved. Two requests were denied. And three requests were placed on hold pending the receipt of additional information requested by the commission. The commission reviewed all the new business and the meeting was adjourned at 8:30 p.m. And I just want to mention that the Parks and Recreation annual Halloween party is Tuesday, October 31 at Kennedy Park beginning at 3 p.m. And I just want to say to Deputy Mayor Pettis, it was a pleasure working with you Saturday at Hempstead Business Appreciation Day.
Thank you. And you and your staff did an excellent job. And I must say, Dr. Gates, I know you sat back there. You did a hard... You did a very, very hard job putting this all together and organizing everything. I want to say thank you. Very good. And I would like to comment quickly and I'm sure that's who probably undermined this. On Sunday, an opportunity to vote for the ABGS Middle Schools and the Lincoln Park. At the Middle School, Hempstead Raiders had four games since their homecoming. It's amazing how quickly they've organized in just their first year. There have been a couple of speed bumps. Forgot about the line in the middle school field. That's been corrected. They now begin to realize that it's going to get darker at the end of the month. We're working on that correction. And they also had a concern with transportation with the parents have rallied. They have an awful lot of support. I was impressed and I enjoyed my day there. Then I went to Lincoln Park for the Hempstead Tiger Cubs, which has been in existence since 1968. And that too was a delight for last week. All organized, lots of volunteers. And in both places, there was opportunities for the parents to purchase items and be able to support the program. So it was a delight. And the number of hempstead kids involved made it just that much nicer. So congratulations. And you need a little time. I'm sure thanking them because they deserve it. One last footnote with the Raiders. They've got cheerleaders. Okay, thank you.
Personal service wireless board.
Electric Board. Deputy Mayor Ryan. Deputy Mayor Pettis. For the trustees, officers, and residents. Getting my status report. T-Mobile USA Incorporated. A new application installation. A public hearing was scheduled and held Thursday, September 28, 2017, at 11 o'clock a.m. A public notice was advertised in the newspaper, September 27, 2017. Notices were mailed to the homeowners within a 200-feet radius as per Village Code by the applicant and was posted in seven Village locations stating the date and as well on the Village of Hempstead website. The time of the public hearing on September 28, 2017, at 11 o'clock a.m. here at Village Hall. Proposed installation at 817 Peninsula Boulevard, New York, 11550. Rooftop, a private property. Board hearing was called and opened. The pledge of allegiance recited. Meeting was open and introduction and motion to waive the last board meeting minutes were waived in the hearing. In attendance, all scheduled board members, Debo Sallow, Yvano, Stacy Hart Gray, Teddy McLean, Saga Metta, and presenters for the T-Mobile and the T-Mobile attorneys and advocate. Pursuant to this application procedure, as the zoning office of the Village of Hempstead, my initial responsibility is to review according to Section 139, 185. Present and prepare the board review. A staff report was submitted to the personal wireless board for the public hearing. T-Mobile presented the case and answered all questions during the testimony as T-Mobile had the floor. There were two resident members in the community who took testimony, who we took testimony from. The concerns, one was radio frequency and the safety in their neighborhood. She brought work... She thought work was being done on or around her property. And the work had already begun, she assumed, because what has happened across the street. It was explained that there was no work being done at this time pertaining to the personal wireless application. Two, nor was there going to be any cables or wires or anything on or around her property. Those were her concerns. It is strictly on the site location stated, on the rooftop of an existing building at grade level. The building stands 33 feet and nine inches tall and with the attached bulkhead, 39 feet and nine inches grade level. And based on the antennas, at the bottom, there are 44 feet and one inch attached to the bulk and the top of the antenna is 46 feet and one inch high. The property is in a business B zone and the antenna could go as high as 85 feet, but there's no existing building in this area. And we do not want to have to give permission to build an 85-foot pole or have a Tier One antenna base station built across the street or in the area that would give the industrial skyline in the area any possible... Where it could possibly bring down the property value. You cannot say no. You cannot build. The FCC regulates all locations and sites the village. The FCC regulates all locations and sites. The village cannot deny any application, arbitrary or capacious, without proof while it is based on fear. The personal wireless board has to approve within the village jurisdiction once the FCC report is submitted and when it's mandated as a location of interest. The second resident had concern about the radio frequency safety and submitted several names in the petition stating they were concerned about the health issues and the radiation it brings to their community. It's okay in someone else's community, but they don't want it. There are 24 or so sites throughout the Village of Hempstead and 100 or so surrounding us north, east, west, and south of the Village of Hempstead. This is how we stay connected and the prevention of dropped phone calls. The personal wireless board is responsible to make sure they are licensed and we explore the best for our community, visual, and the best for our surrounding properties. Radio frequency waves are transmitted outward and work on the maximum permissible exposure, limits to field strength. We make sure it's approved by the FCC, the Federal Commission... Federal Commission? Federal Communication Commission? Federal Communication Commission and the personal wireless board before its strength. We make sure it's approved before it's submitted to the building department for a building permit. The New York State has building laws and all applicants must comply to all state mandates once the special use permit is issued. The FCC regulates and approves. We make sure it's done accordingly. The special permit was approved by the board. But there is no reason why we should not approve this application. The special use permit will be issued with the board decision and made as requested at the hearing. T-Mobile may file for a building permit to build a base station on the rooftop of an existing building. Personal wireless board approved the new application.
Thank you.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Before you sit down, a couple of questions?
Yes.
Can you mention the location of that site, the building? How it's going?
817 Peninsula.
817 Peninsula. It's part of Martha Street, Pennsylvania.
That's a public storage building.
Right. And you also mentioned the distance away from that tower in the community is... Did you mention something about that?
The distance from the community?
Yeah, from the tower to the residents there?
Yeah, it's 30... Oh, 44 feet's in the air. It's way over houses.
And do they also kind of celebrate the community and actually speak to any of the residents there?
That's why we send our public notices to the residents inviting them in within a 200-feet radius.
That's what I... A 200-feet radius?
Yes. That's in any zone that we do in the village.
That hearing didn't take place yet, huh?
Yes, September 28.
Did you take... Did you get any feedback from the community? Just two people?
And, you know, there was... He had a petition, but they weren't here.
Let me just ask you a question.
Go ahead.
Eight names.
I was just going to ask you a question. Is there any time when your meetings are held other than in the morning hours?
No.
It might be something to consider to increase the turnout because some of the people I'm sure are working might be able to come out in the evening, early evening and be able to do the presentation.
We have over... We've been doing this for 12 years.
Right.
And it's always been in the papers. And it's always been posted.
It's not a question of being in the papers or posted. My concern is that only two people. I'm looking to recent. That might be the case. It's wanting if it was in evening time. Still posted, still everything. Whether or not the turnout might be larger and we get a better reflection of the concerns of the residents and their input would be appreciated.
Or if you can't do that, maybe sometime you could rotate the meetings between afternoons or evenings and mornings? Every once in a while?
She's smiling. If it's something, please consider. Thank you.
We can consider it.
Okay.
Hempstead Library Board. Traffic Safety Board.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Deputy Mayor, Presses. And the following recommendations were made at the Traffic Safety Board meeting held on September 27, 2017. Therefore, a resolution is needed for the following. Install a "No Standing Here to Corner" sign with an arrow pointing east on the south side of Jerusalem Avenue, 90 feet west of Belmont Parkway. Remove the "No Standing Here to Corner" sign that currently exists on the south side of Jerusalem Avenue. It is 45 feet west of Belmont Parkway. No trucks except for local delivery signs to be installed on southbound Belmont Parkway at Jerusalem Avenue. And a "No Trucks Except for Local Delivery" sign is to be installed on northeastbound Belmont Parkway at Greenwich Street. There's got too many trucks using this shit. "Deaf Child Area" sign is to be installed on northbound Perry Street at Jerusalem Avenue. And a "Deaf Child Area" sign is to be installed on southbound Perry Street at Cedar Street. Please note that regulations will take effect when signs are markings giving notice or they're posted, submitted by me. Just on a side note to the evening meetings, traffic safety used to be at 3 p.m. on the fourth Mondays and it was moved to 6:30 p.m. and we've been there ever since. So what do we do? We get everybody out. Now, there were a couple of things that came up at the meeting. One is that the people on Leverett Street and I think it's the Ingram State Civic Association.
Yes.
They're asking for the signs, for the garbage, you know, for no parking on the street so the streets reapers can go through because their streets are not getting swept. They were all... We had a ton of people there the other night and apparently we're the only board they can come to talk to. Another set of people came and asked about the stop lines being repainted because we have a lot of kids crossing streets. And a lot of people are just not realizing where they're supposed to stop because the lines are not there. A lot of our lines... I mean, there's hardly a street, I think, in Hempstead that has any really noticeable lines these days. They have to be repainted to make it safer for our children to go from, you know, when they're crossing the streets for school. It's very important.
Thank you. There are other boards though that had questions asked as well. I will report my brief...
We had a whole lot of people.
Well, like, poor Dan. Thank you.
Hempstead Boarding, Navy Council of Civic Association.
Good evening, Mayor, Trustees.
Good evening.
Okay. I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out for our free cookout at Kennedy Park that we had on September thirty-third. Uh, special thanks would go out to Vanessa Henry, Perry Pettis, and Lamont Johnson for the efforts that they have given to the success of the Corning Council out there. Thank yous very much.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
U. S. Council. Board of Zoning Appeals. Lenny Born.
Good evening, Mayor Ryan, Deputy Pettis.
Good evening.
Village residents. Incorporated George of Hempstead Planning Board Meeting, May 18th at six-thirty.
He's very sensitive.
President Marcy Turner, then with Dean's Rashid Walker, Leroy Brown, and Chairman Pettis. Also present Dennis McDermott of Council and Michelle Banks, Administrator to the Planning Board. The acceptance of amendments removed by Chairman Pettis at the reading of amendments of the record meeting of July seventeen being dispensed with and accepted as review, seconded by Mrs. Turner, all were in favor. The following ten cases were approved. Case number five forty-four, Ninety-Five Clinton Street for Medical Office. Case number five eighty-six, Block Forty-two for Removal of Condition Set by the Planning Board. Case six thirty-four, Fifty Main Street for Law Office. Case six thirty-six, vacant lot on East Columbia Street to construct a two-story family dwelling. Case six thirty-seven, Nineteen Chaseman Street for Little Debbie's Cookie, uh, Cake Warehouse. Case number six thirty-eight, Forty-three C. Main Street Aurora Evolution Beauty Salon. Case number six forty-one, Forty-three Main Street, a Metro PCS Store. Case six forty-two, Seven Twenty-nine Fulton Avenue. Medina Halil Food. Six forty-three, vacant lot on Warner Avenue to construct a two-family, a two-story family dwelling. And six forty-six, South Franklin Street Site Plan Approval for Subdivision Lot. There were no further business. And a motion was made by the Chairman to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Rashid Walker, all were in favor. The next Planning Board Meeting will be Monday, October sixteen, at six-thirty P M.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hempstead Housing Authority.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Trustees.
Good evening.
How are you? The roof replacement at one thirty-four Yale Street is completed and we're awaiting , um, the warranty inspection by the manufacturer, uh, but I'm glad to see that it's done. We've been, on the public housing side, we've been really working on renovating and leasing apartments to our applicants. We have a number of vacancies, um, that have to be on the waiting list, so we'll be leasing to new tenants. Um, in Section Eight, we started interviewing and issuing vouchers to the applicants that applied under our lottery waiting list. So we have quite a few people out in the community right now looking for apartments. Um, we, we are hosting graduate students from Hofstra University School of Public Health for working with our, um, our residents. We have several, a, a group of residents that are peer health ambassadors, um, implementing some of the, um, health programs at the Housing Authority as part of their classroom experience, um, as incoming graduate students. They're getting intern, you know, they're getting classroom credit for that. I'm working on updating our public housing admissions and continued occupancy policy, which is the policy that we use, um, in order to, um, uh, follow HUD's rules and regulations in terms of bringing in new tenants, maintaining the waiting list, and re-certifying tenants every year for continued occupancy, and also for lease enforcement. We're doing that based on new HUD regulations that have come out, um, so that's a, a, a project that's underway. And we'll be doing that also with Section Eight, um, with our administrative plan, because HUD's been putting in a lot of new requirements. We want to be, you know, up to date. We, um, I also did provide some training to our maintenance staff on apartment turnover and occupancy, um, and they received, uh, we also had them do some defensive driving training to help with our insurance busts, because the maintenance staff do drive our trucks during business hours only. Um, and, um, and we're gonna be providing more training for the rest of our staff. That's pretty much what we've been working on right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
C D A.
Good evening, Mayor, Trustees.
Good evening.
We just recently had our C D A Board Meeting, about a half an hour ago. The Ground Force Opportunity Area Grant is moving along. The steering committee will be meeting on October twenty-fourth at Kennedy Park. It is open to all, the nine members of the steering committee will all be there as well. At the St. Francis School, David Patterson is in the final stages of final plan approval by the Design Department in, uh, at the Department of Transportation for New York State. It will then move to planning and then instruction approval. For Jackson School, we recently contracted with N V Five, who's our consultants to do the designs, they're preparing the packet right now. Hopefully we'll be submitting it in the next week or two. And today during our Board, our C D A Board Meeting, we passed a resolution to contract N V Five for A B G S Middle School as well to, uh, start the design, uh, packet for that school and submit to D O T. so we can structure the approval process as soon as possible. The C D A also recently received a forty-third-year contract. Uh, the contract had a few mistakes, so I asked Nassau County to make the changes. Once they make the changes and get it back to us, we will have the Chairman and Mayor sign the contract and Nassau County will then have all of their department heads sign it, and hopefully we'll have the signed contract by the end of November. Do you guys have any questions?
Uh, just one. A B G S Middle School, is that the peninsula and Greenwich Street, Greenwich Street?
Uh, no, we're actually not doing Henry Street because...
No, I'm peninsula in, uh, Greenwich Street.
We're also not doing Greenwich Street, it's actually just, uh, just one street. The reason for that was due to the lack of funding that we got from D O T. Any additional work would just increase the cost too much.
Should I just peninsula a little more?
Thank you very much.
Uh, historian, Ms. Bethany.
Did you answer the comment?
Yes.
No, we're right, thank you. There's gonna be a presentation now for a few minutes regarding some art story and regarding the book on, on the Village of Hempstead. Remind everybody if you'd like to ask a question at the open mic, this would be a good time to bring it up.
I'm a village historian and I've been working terribly hard for more than a year on this book, but it's very difficult to show anything about it to anybody because it doesn't exist as a physical book, or, or I'm halfway through. And I can say, look here, now I'm on page sixty-seven. It's a mass of computer files. So I have turned in the materials, the book will come out, um, it should come out in April, I thought by February, but it will be in time for the three-hundred-and-seventy-fifth celebration that we're gonna be having. So I'm just going to show you a few of the pictures and just explain what the book tries to accomplish. I'm gonna start by showing you the book's projected cover, and if you can't see over there, you know, maybe scooch over here, because I recognize it's kind of off to one side. Oh, I wish, can I make this bigger again? No, it makes it smaller. Okay, sorry, the way the PDF is being brought up, it doesn't show the whole thing at once. But on the cover will be a building which I hope you all immediately recognize. Yes, right, this is standing still at the corner of Green and Fulton. It was built in nineteen oh-seven, and this picture was taken in the very early twenties, and that's at the time when regionally, um, Hempstead began to be known as the hub. It had built up enough commercially and in, in all ways. Now, even though on the cover is this iconic building, and although this fulfills the publisher's goals, the publisher's goals for the book are that people are gonna look at it and say, "Oh, I know that building. Oh, I remember that. Oh my goodness, I never knew that." And the book fulfills those goals. But I have goals of my own also, which is to, um, make sure that everybody, as much as possible in the village, sees themselves represented in the book. I discovered some surprising things. The, um, the village was not founded, uh, for financial reasons, really, but for, uh, it was founded to be a good society. Now, this is from the nineteen fifties, this picture, a bunch of Boy Scouts who are, um, having a mock trial in the village. Should we turn the lights off or anything to, and, or can you see it okay? You can see it all right? And of course, you're gonna recognize that, which commemorates the beginnings of the village. And I try to emphasize that the native groups that were here, whose leader is pictured as the tall guy on the right with the red Takapasha, were not just a bunch of simple people that handed over some land, but Takapasha remains for another fifty-three years in the village record as one of the leaders, like Wyandanch, who went around and brokered land and peace agreements between the incoming Europeans and the native groups that were there. So these, these were substantial people who were of great importance in the original village life and had influence on it. Uh, I keep using the wrong arrows. Well, let's see, hold on a second. Try that one. Okay. Now, why did people settle here? Why did they come here and not on the coasts? It's very interesting. Here in the middle of this huge wide plain that was mainly a lot of waist-high blue grass, surrounded by scenes like this, which you still see down in Hempstead Lake Park or down near the high school. There were many, many waterways and trees, and these guys were farmers. So when they set up their good society, they already knew how they'd provide for their families. And they, um, these men here are John Carmen and Robert Fordham. They were following a man named Richard Denton, a Presbyterian minister for whom Denton Green is named. And my reason to tell you this is that the, um, they weren't here to trade beaver pelts like the people that settled the lower tip of Manhattan, the Dutch, the Dutch West Indian Company. They wanted to make money. These people wanted to set up a society where everybody could vote based on their citizenship and not because they were part of a certain church, and people would be cared for. And in fact, they, um, already had a system recorded well in place by, within a few years after they arrived, to take care of the poor in, in their midst. And, uh, you're gonna, some of you are gonna recognize the building that's on the right because it stood from eighteen forty-six to nineteen sixty-eight. It just represents Christ First Presbyterian Church, which dates its beginnings way back to eighteen forty-four. And also on the left is Samus Tavern, let's see. Do we have a representation of the village seal not right here? But you know, the village seal has got George Washington standing there, and behind him is a building. Well, that's Samus Tavern. He has a tie of Samus, built that tavern roughly sixteen sixty-five or something, and it stood until nineteen twenty-nine and was always run by a Samus, all the way down, almost three hundred years. And that, I tell you that because I discovered that the strength of Hempstead Village rested on the longs years, hundreds of years of families that were strong and passed on a tradition of, of business alertness and also moral upstanding values. So we're gonna look at a couple of those in a minute, and I've got to be quick. That was just a glimpse of the society. It was really pretty organized what the native people had, and their relationship was never truly equal with the Europeans. The Europeans were more powerful and eventually kind of squeezed them out. But in the meanwhile, I don't know if you can see what's in this guy's hand. Wait, let me use the little pointer here. It's Wampum. Wampum is carved clam shells, and Long Island was renowned all over the northeast region of the United States for its Wampum and its artistry. And this was their money. This is what they traded, the Europeans, the Dutch, the English, they adopted it for, as currency for a very long time. And, um, black people were here very, very early. Slaves were brought in sixteen twenty-six by the Dutch West Indian Company, and both free people and slaves, uh, worked in Long Island, about forty percent of Long Island, um, families. So not, sixty percent didn't have any slaves, about forty percent had two or three. And so, um, it was not just white hands that built all this stuff originally. It's not like it was just white people here. There was always kind of a, um, an important, significant precedent, presence of non-white people that made this village go around. I'm jumping forwards to the nineteenth century, just previewing the fact that there were many really famous personalities here, like this guy, Peter Cooper, who was an extremely important inventor. He lived in Hempstead Village for a while, his house now stands in Old Beth Page. That hotel, Stephen Hewlett, you know Hewlett, the community of Hewlett? Well, Stephen Hewlett had a hotel, and that's where the village got incorporated. In eighteen fifty-three, the vote eighty-eight to forty-one for incorporation, and you can see, uh, perhaps beyond it, the cupola of Saint George's Church, which has been there. That cupola, not the whole building, but the cupola is from seventeen thirty-five. It's been a landmark right there in the village. And here's one of the major families, the Seabury family. Uh, an early Saint George's rector was Samuel Seabury. In the nineteenth century, his descendants formed a large part of the backbone of business in Hempstead Village. So we're going on and on with these descendants and these families. And because of their strength in holding this place together, right here in the middle of a plain, it made Hempstead a hub that became very necessary, because coming west from Manhattan, there was Jamaica, and then another twenty miles east, there was Hempstead. And other communities were around, but much smaller. So Hempstead's importance during the nineteenth century was huge in the development of Queens and Nassau Counties. Now, this little lady, her pet shoe show, I'm not sure why it's not, but, ah, great. If that my husband had to be a technological zebra. Yeah, okay, this little lady, this is an eighteen eighty-five picture of a woman, a young lady named Louisa Battantine, and her daughter, Irma Brazier, they lived in Hempstead Village. Her daughter contributed photos, a whole photo collection, to Nassau County. One of my frustrations is just the fact that without spending a million dollars to buy photos from Musee and all, I really rely on donated collections. Hempstead Library has a big collection. I mean, it's really impressive. It's all kind of crammed together in a little space in the basement, and they need more room, but it's wonderfully organized, and it has the largest digital collection of the surrounding libraries on the New York Heritage Site, by far the largest. It's really quite impressive. So I, my sources were Hempstead Library, Hofstra Collections, um, Nassau County Archives, Capitalist articles from the New York Times, Hempstead Sentinel, um, the archives below our feet, building something around to a lot of places. Anyway, um, this little lady grew up to marry somebody, uh, named Walter Brazier, and then we're, we're gonna see her daughter in a minute. And, um, this photo, all of you have probably seen it, in nineteen oh-nine, this was the police force. Uh, until nineteen nine oh-nine, it was the middle three. But we had, they started in eighteen ninety-three, and this guy, Robert Daniel Water, was the chief, and if they had to get to a crime, they ran. It wasn't till nineteen oh-nine that they got wheels, and then gradually the force went up from there. That's what that photo is about. And here we have Irma Brazier herself. Thank you, Charlie. Oh, wait, let me try again. No, you were right, I just punched it wrong arrows. There she is. She graduated from Hempstead High School in nineteen twenty-four. She, um, remained in the area. I tried to keep finding her, I kind of lost track of her after nineteen forty-six, but she was known in the area as a very talented soprano. So with her and the Seaburies and a couple other families, I'm trying to just represent the, the strong traditions that have been so important to, um, village quality. I'm there again, let me do this. Okay. This guy, Archibald Holly Patterson, is one of the people that I profile a little bit. He was a son of Hempstead Village and he, um, had a long, long history of public service here. This is from our library. This was the library in nineteen forty-nine. It was in a village that had outgrown, I mean, a, a building, but it's always had wonderful children's programs, and I, I just love that photo, and in fact, my children grew up doing stuff at the library, maybe some of yours did too. And here is the ribbon cutting for that little park back there behind the library, Harold Mason Park, named after a Hempstead, um, resident who, uh, passed away in Vietnam. And Dalton Miller is the tall guy on the right, and he was, he led the village for many years, um, during, um, the late sixties and nineteen seventies. And here, um, there might be somebody familiar looking there on the right. Patricia Moore there? She was the first female ever elected to the Board of Trustees, and she and John Van Huren here, who was a professor at Hofstra, was, the two of them were the first Democrats ever elected to the Board of Trustees. Russell Service was the first African-American ever elected to the Board of Trustees. So this nineteen eighty-one photo has a lot of history behind it. And my feeling about the village is, you know, it's all of our village. I think the only thing that really threatens this place is the tendency of any place to break down into groups. And there are a lot of groups in the village. It is extremely diverse, which I think makes it one of the extremely important places on the map, because if we can keep unifying here and keep solving our problems together, which I don't see why we can't. We certainly have the brains and the energy and the talent. Here's a little example of local talent, um, that I just wanted to show you. This is... This is my picture of Mayor Hall. I took it when I was practicing with my camera. But I managed to get one from Antonio Kelly, who's sitting over there, which is Mayor Hall and his wife. I needed a picture at least of Mayor Ryan. That was mine. But I won one of the Board of Trustees. This is Antonio's, which I'm very happy will be in the book. Finally got one. This is almost the last image in the book. And it kind of neatly bookends the history. Because my first image is that one with the Boy Scouts. And so basically, that ends my presentation here. There are, I showed you about 18 or 19 images. There are 217, all with captions that sequentially trace the history up until today. So that's my report, and thank you very much.
That was great and very interesting. I thank kindly to you all, thank you. I should mention to the people present that Hempstead treats your interest tomorrow night, Wednesday, at the library in the community hall, the Historical Society, at 7:00 p.m. It's a great opportunity to share more of the interest in the background of Hempstead. We have an exciting community, and our history is extremely rich. Thank you.
Does the board wish to have the minutes of the regular meeting of September 19, 2017 read aloud?
I approve that the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 19, 2017 be dispensed with and that they be accepted as reviewed.
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Refro?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Does the board wish to report that Mayor Ryan and the Premier Mayor Perez have approved his name's business license as reviewed? Does the board wish to approve the resolution that the taxpayer, Philie Tassi, for the property known as 508 Front Street Hempstead Year, are refunding the amount of $151,134 payment as follows. $50,378, $1,000, within 60 days after received by the village of a certified copy of the due sign and enter and order a judgment. Two, $50,378 within 120 days after received by the village of a certified copy of the due sign and to order a judgment. Enter $50,378 within 180 days after received by the village of a certified copy of the due sign and enter order a judgment for the taxi years 2006, 2007 through 2013, 2014.
So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Refro?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Clerk office is following resolution. That permission is granted for the neighborhood village of Hempstead to enter into an agreement with Mental Health Association of Nassau, 16 Main Street Hempstead Year, 11550, to utilize 48 parking spaces located in Municipal Parking Field Number 11 in the Incorporated Village of Hempstead from October 1st, 2017 through September 30, 2019. The mayor be in the advice of the right to execute an agreement on behalf of the Village of Hempstead on such terms and conditions as are acceptable to the village attorney.
Move. Second. Action mentions $3 a day for a total of $37,440 for one year.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Refro?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Clerk office is following resolution. That permission is granted for the neighborhood village of Hempstead to enter into an agreement with Mental Health Association of Nassau, 16 Main Street Hempstead Year, 11550, to utilize 48 parking spaces located in Municipal Parking Field Number 11 in the Incorporated Village of Hempstead from October 1st, 2017 through September 30, 2019. The mayor be in the advice of the right to execute an agreement on behalf of the Village of Hempstead on such terms and conditions as are acceptable to the village attorney.
Move. Second. Action mentions $3 a day for a total of $37,440 for one year.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Refro?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Clerk office is following resolution. That permission is granted for the Iglesia Alta de Costa Unida, Roca eterna, 298 Fulton Avenue, Hempstead, New York, to host church service from October 12 to October 14, 2017, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Municipal Parking Field Number 1 for your charge. Similar permissions continue upon compliance with the rules and regulations of the Hempstead Police Department. No liability in connection with the holding of this event and of service of the Village of Hempstead as it applies to group gatherings of this type. Defining a voluntary insurance of determined by the board hearing, indemnification and the execution of a whole market agreement on such terms and conditions as may be acceptable to the village attorney.
So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Refro?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Does the board, does the board wish to take any action at this time of the public hearing, which was scheduled in October 19, 2017, to consider amendment 95-14 alcoholic beverage consumption in open containers? To consider amendment 95-14 alcoholic beverage consumption in open containers? So move.
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Refro?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Clerk office is following resolution to revise the appointment of annual salary changes for certain full-time and part-time employees of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead as reviewed as follow. Ashan Bingo, 99 equals 4 in Hempstead Year, you hire. Public Works and Station Labor Part-Time, salary of $14.91 per hour upon approval. Don Juan St., 99 equals 4 in Hempstead Year, you hire. Parks and Recreation, Recreation Addendum Part-Timeer, $14.91 per hour upon approval.
So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Refro?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes, I should note that no longer says community civil service approval. We actually send the names of people who are applicants for jobs to civil service, and we get the approval in advance. And then, what so chooses, we nominate them for position, such as we did with these two people tonight.
Clerk office is following resolution. That all meeting deals, including self-insurance bonds and budget transfer, under by the Board of Trustees in Chaguar and Theater of November 3, 2017, be approved as previous to the bill.
So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Refro?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
And please don't forget, we need all forms now. Thank you. If you have any questions. All right, here we go with the open mic session. Alan Newsom, please.
Good evening, Mayor Ryan.
Good evening.
Jesse's. Didn't realize I'd be first, but that's...
Somebody's got to be first.
Yeah, right. Okay, traffic on our streets. Many of the streets need to be turned into one-way. You know, Hempstead's old village and all the streets are very, very down. Lincoln Road, you can't get down. It's one, it's really one car going down. Hollow Street, Curry Street, and there's many others. The other day, I was coming down and a truck was coming. He had to move over, I had to move over. And my neighbor said, the other guy is... We're going to have a serious accident out there. I believe there has been some accidents out there. But as in Queens and Brooklyn, most of the streets here need to be turned into one-way. We have more people now than ever before. It's congested. So maybe you should think about that. Speed limits. I think a speed limit is 30 miles an hour. No one goes 30, maybe 40, 45. And maybe it's, you know, keep a, maybe a speed check on that. Stop signs, they don't stop, stop at all. No parking signs. I know there's no parking signs on Lewis Place in Hempstead. And there's some over there by Hofstra University, Duncan Road, and so on and so forth. We need to put them all down from 8:00 to 8:00. Or from 8:00 to 8:00 in the morning. What's happening is this is right down on a lot of the illegal housing too. Because if they have to place a bar, they don't want to be there. All right? Police operators, police operators. I got from a lot of my members that they were very antagonistic towards them. And I think once before, we had something with that. And I think they simply to train. I want to say thank you to the EPW. Call, they're there, excellent job, EPW. Ingraham Boulevard Repair. When are they going to finish that? Or when are they going to do it? I know they used to have a problem because that's the state, the town?
County.
The county, yeah. They just have a problem, not paying or something. It's hard. You know, you drive alongside down the street. Thank you.
Take the last one first, if you don't mind.
Sure.
It is a concern. And I do feel for the residents of that block and the other people who can use that street. But until they're paid, they're not going to work. If we fix it, they're going to rip it up. We have to wait for them to get paid, fix it, and move along. Unfortunately, the negotiations are at a stale space. So as quickly as that can be done, and we're encouraged of it, but we're not getting much results. I might mention to you two, with the police operators, that we have Assistant Chief and Deputy Chief present. If you tell them the time and the date, they can play it back and see if they can verify your invite and then make a correction at that time. Also, we'd like to just say, in the presence of the other speakers speaking, that Mary Lawrence is present. She's the Chair Lady of our Traffic Safety Board. And some of these requests, in fact, all of these requests, should go before them. Lieutenant Cable will investigate and make a determination. And perhaps the comments you make could be acceptable.
I have links to the address.
And if you put it in writing, I'm sure they'll respond. I'll share with him your concerns and your suggestions about the one ways. But if you can do it, it would dramatize a little more.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody? Tina Schufert?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Trustees.
Good evening.
I'm here to represent concerns on parking on Jackson. Y'all have a charter street, y'all gonna build a high school over there? And the parking is ridiculous and it's going to be worse. They just park on Jackson and cut off streets and make it harder for us to even get into our building over at 100 Terrace. And they're going to block over there on the Dell. So putting a high school there is not going to even make it safe at all. So something needs to be done. And they don't just block one street, they block both sides. So what we going to do about that?
If you talk about Jackson Street, let's talk the north side. Parking is now only allowed for people who are dropping off and picking up students at the school so that they are not double, triple parked. That's a new phenomenon that hasn't yet been embraced by everybody. But there is enforcement and protection to create that situation as to whether it be safe, if you're right. Also, there will be diagonal parking on Terrace on the west side of the street to create 31 more parking spaces. So whatever we've lost on Jackson for the residents, we will more than pick up on Terrace. There'll still be no parking on Terrace Avenue on the east side. And the Dell Street remains the same. Of course, we agree with the additional school, there's more traffic. But we are providing some avenues for the teaching body to be able to park safely and avoid taking spots that belong to our residents. We are doing that. Where are these concerns? And we've been proactive in that area.
Yeah, well, like I said, I couldn't even get into my building, not even what, a couple of days ago.
Are you talking about the blocking?
That's right, they blocked my driveway. So something needs to be done.
Well, that would be...
They get out with their street, they get out with their kids. I'm concerned about their children. They go running out the car. You gotta do something, it's a safety concern.
Well, let me just repeat, on the north side of Jackson, there is no parking. It is designed for people who are bringing students to the school to park there, let the kids out on the side. So there is not the double, triple parking. I would agree, it's new. The concept is still being embraced. But that's the plan, and safety is the reason for that.
Okay. They've been doing it, they've been doing it since last year. So I hope you hurry up and get on top of it.
And the new, and the school, the high school, it's going to be underground parking.
Well, okay, we'll see. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Randy Smith?
Good luck.
Okay, thank you. Terry Winston?
Go ahead. Terry Winston, Hempstead Village resident. I'm here tonight to reveal that I have made an extraordinarily important discovery. It has to do with parking lot number 10. Parking lot number 10 is the site where CPK Dell Bus Company has applied for a pilot tax break to construct its new headquarters. I remind you that Renaissance got parking lot number 10 for $0 by means of a so-called appraisal process. Now you see exactly how ridiculous and criminal that appraisal process was. As of September 5th of this year, Renaissance sold parking lot 10 to CPK Dell for $3.5 million. I have a copy indeed. CPK has adapted to apply for a pilot tax break after it sells its own properties on Main Street for $3.5 million, and hands over the $3.5 million to Renaissance to build apartment buildings on Main Street. I have the deed for those transactions as well. At the last meeting, you criticized Mrs. Gary for indicating that the pilot for Dell was connected to the construction of several apartment buildings on Main Street. My investigation has shown that she is completely right. Mayor Ryan, you said you were opposed to apartment houses being constructed on Main Street, yet you have supported the Dell pilot, which is intimately connected to the apartment house instructions. Yet, you have supported the Dell pilot. As Mrs. Gary stated, they are intimately connected. Your support for the pilot for Dell is equivalent of supporting the pilot for the 255 units on the Mark Bush property and an additional 96 units on the site where the buses used to be on Main Street. These plans have already been submitted to the planning board. And I find it incredibly hard to believe, Mr. Ryan, I mean, Mayor Ryan, that you are unaware of this intimate connection. If you are unaware of it, it is of your own choosing. All three plans, along with the plans for two additional apartment buildings on parking lot number 8, were submitted as one package to the planning board in November of 2016. Renaissance presented them all. The Dell building has been presented as a Renaissance project. Furthermore, the plans are connected through a land swap, which is a type of tax break scheme. This land swap was indicated in the pilot applications. The transfer of the properties from CPK to Renaissance and from Renaissance to CPK was specifically stated in their application as a 1031 real property tax, a real property exchange. However, what is most stressing is that this land transaction shows that the giveaway of parking lot number 10 and the other parking lots for free was entirely bogus. And that you, Mayor Ryan, and the attorneys... and that you, Mayor Ryan, and the attorneys have refused, for whatever reason, to tell the truth to the court with respect to this matter. Instead of fighting to get the parking lots back, you are supporting a project by Dell Bus Company to construct their new headquarters on a parking lot that was stolen from Hempstead Village residents. This is not only wrong, but it is tragic.
I'd like to respond. Of course, as to the so-called giveaway of the parking lots, it's done under previous administration. There was no vote. The arrangement was made between Don Martin and Mayor Wayne Hall. They did not vote on it. As to the situation we're now in, as to the pilot being considered by the Town of Hempstead, industrial development agency, CPK Dell Bus, the IDA continues to confirm to me that it is a standalone. There was no domino effect regarding the larger footprint of the area. I have from them a list of all of the people who applied for pilots. Renaissance Downtown has not applied for assistance during the old CPK property on the southeast corner. They're not part of any benefit package for the old Mac Markworth property on the northeast corner, man, the Dell. And west of Main Street, another proposed parking complex was erected, reportedly at a later date, and is not part of any pending administration, part of the Town of Hempstead IDA. I've gone there in person, guided in writing, attended meetings, and same thing to you, we come up with different conclusions. Uh, I think it's my turn now.
Yeah, but I want to ask a question.
Well, let me, then, see if I can finish first.
Go ahead, I'm saying, you finish.
The, no, I'm, you know, not finished. The concern about the pilot that we are recommended for Dell has to do with the fact that there are now thirty-six Hempstead people working there, or fifty-nine. There'll be forty more Hempstead people working there. The taxes presently will be in year one, forty-six thousand dollars. It goes to a hundred and twenty thousand in year four, up to one thirty, one thirty-five, one forty-two, one forty-seven, one fifty-five. By year ten, a hundred sixty-two thousand and five hundred dollars. It is something necessary for the village. We need some opportunity, jobs. This creates that opportunity. There is no domino effect. Let me point out that if they are requesting a pilot from the Town of Hempstead IDA, the Town of Hempstead IDA requires a letter from this board supporting the pilot, and it is dead on the line. If they are going in there with their own money and no pilot, then our hands are a bit tied. But that has not yet been the case. Everybody who's wanted to build has come in with what you described, apartment buildings, with pilots, and few jobs. And we have not supported that in the six months that we have sat as a board. And we had nothing to do with the so-called giveaway of the property. The contract calls are for good faith. The contract calls for good faith. The contract calls for good faith. For me to join a lawsuit, or for me to do something to damage the possibility for residents of this village having their finances hurt by a suit, I have to stand on the side of that regard. I cannot afford to give us exposure, because I'm finally in the terms of agreement that I inherited, and it's imperative that I follow that. Now, you may respond, but we are not in the debate, so if you can keep it quickly, we'll want the next person.
The town of Hempstead guys, they got their information, from information that was produced and contrary to what you're saying.
I got my idea.
Contrary to what you're saying. Okay? And if you recall, you did sit on the board, the last board, when the last mayor was, was the mayor, Ma- Mayor Cole was, was the, was the mayor. Okay?
I referenced that.
You did, and, and, and you're saying that you didn't, you didn't vote, he was the only one to vote?
No one, no one, no one. And Bishop Cox explained that individually to you, and to others, that we did not vote, he didn't vote, I didn't vote, no one voted.
Okay, so that's exactly what I'm saying. I'm not asking you to support the lawsuit. I'm, I'm asking you to say the truth. And the truth is that you didn't agree to it. Then say it, not just here, but where, where it counts.
You missed a key point here. There is something we inherited, it's called a contract. In it, it says, "Good faith." We do not want to expose residents' community to a lawsuit. They would be damaged greatly, so we have to move on. I cannot support your lawsuit, for that matter.
I'm not asking you to support it, I'm, I'm, I'm asking you to tell the truth.
That is the truth.
And you're running and dancing around it.
I'm not, I didn't.
That's not what you campaigned on.
I campaigned, I'm against the idea of...
Your campaign was a lie.
Oh, goodness gracious. I campaigned, I, 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 I was against.
See, she didn't see to what you want.
Let me, let me talk. I was against the apartment buildings with pilots that created little jobs. There, there is no why. If that's your answer to everything, you don't need to have me come up. You're gonna just say the same thing? You happen to be wrong on this. Now let's move on. Louis Mendez, please.
Good evening, Mayor, how are you?
I was pretty good.
Good, Mayor? And trustees, members of the public, I want to commend the businesses there. Let me, let me tell you the opportunity you're on to really something great. Uh, Bishop Gates, and Deputy Mayor. There are five thousand two hundred and seventeen business firms in the village of Hempstead. Now check this out. There are four hundred and thirty-seven that are veteran-owned. Out of the five thousand two hundred and seventeen, three thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight are minority-owned. And out of the five thousand two hundred and seventeen, two thousand one hundred and forty-nine are women-owned. That means the following, that we're not just restaurants, bodegas, bars, but we are professional services, legal services, services in general, that are the predominant, uh, business force in the village of Hempstead. For that reason, and after doing this at the county level for eight years, managing the Office of Minority Affairs between two thousand and two and two thousand and ten, I, uh, reviewed three components that this would make a home run for the village's business residents. Number one is for the veterans, four hundred and thirty-seven businesses. Peter Fennell is the Director of Veteran Affairs for Long Island. There's special funding for those businesses that are veteran-owned. That's a tremendous opportunity for them, and for, for you guys as the Board of Trustees, to marry the four hundred and thirty-seven businesses in the village of Hempstead that are veteran-owned with their Office of Veteran Affairs. For the minority side, there is the SBA. Right, the lady's name is Beth Goldberg, she's the District Director of the, uh, Small Business Administration. They can help with funding pertaining to loans that are very low interest rate, uh, rates. And then finally, for all the businesses in general in the village of Hempstead, there is a component called a business plan. Being able to help them with a basic need or developing a business plan that leads to a loan could be done by Gloria Hawke from the Small Business Development Center out in Stony Brook. All these services that I just mentioned are free. So I'm hoping to work with you in the next business day, have it be one that we cater to the businesses, not to cater to the people that cater to the businesses, to the actual businesses, to enhance their ability to get more funding, to receive the benefits if they're veteran-owned, and to be able to empower them with more funding, so I'm willing to work with you on that.
You're absolutely right.
Yes. Uh, Mayor, unfortunately, I believe that a fellow left on the CBA. If you remember in the last meeting, I asked him about whether or not, uh, he could give you an update on KPG, which is a consultant that is supposed to identify properties in the downtown for possible redevelopment. Um, he was working with them, but he never gave us a report. Uh, the, the reason why I keep driving that point, uh, is, is that if you identify properties and you put together a committee that can get us to the ten million dollar grant competition, we might be able to be onto something to be able to land those ten million dollars. There is a downtown redevelopment opportunity in the village of Hempstead, identifying those properties and then, uh, putting pressure on both publicly and politically. Uh, the state level may land Hempstead, what Haysville got and what Westerick got, which is a ten million dollar building.
Westerick was the first recipient, Haysville was the next. We applied all times, intend to apply a third time. Also, ten days from now, we intend to apply a two million dollar loan, identifying homes that could be improved as well. Hopefully, that grant will come through as well.
You're right about, I got, I received my business plan from Hasher, but that's where you have to start to get the five oh four.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So, great things, those are great things. You guys are after something really good. It's just a matter of driving the numbers in and letting you know that four hundred and thirty-seven businesses that are veteran-owned here in the village of Hempstead, they got special funding for them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I should just, uh, give a shout out to the former Mayor Garn, because I do recall when he sent the now Deputy Mayor Pettis to Hasher for his business plans, that's right? Lourdes Watts?
Good evening, trustees. My question is very simple, but I can't seem to get an answer. I just want to know, to be a village employee in any capacity, in any department, do you have to be a resident in the village?
The way you worded your question, I'd have to say, no. The reason for that is, in some instances, a civil service test is required. I think it's fair to mention the police department is such an example. We are allowed to reach perhaps the resident, but once that's exhausted, then we have to take the residence and order the test force, and their residency no longer becomes important. There are other examples where waivers may be required. Certainly, you want to have Hempstead residents. One of the areas that I'm working on to see if we can improve this has been a sore spot in the community for a while, and that's lifeguards. Uh, the lifeguards, everybody listens to this number because I need your help. They make five thousand dollars a summer. And they're not Hempstead. We get waivers there from everywhere by Hempstead. So I instructed this year to hire Hempstead people over the lifeguards. Now, this will work if we have registered lifeguards from the village of Hempstead. So everything you can do to encourage that would be greatly appreciated, so we don't have to get waivers to bring people in from out of town, because it's a huge sum of money, and it goes out of the village and should stay in the village. So for the most part, that's favorable. However, there are times where we're unable to do it. I want to thank you two for sort of being on the topic of creation.
Um, so I spoke with, uh, Mr. Sanders and the guards today, and one of the things that I did suggest to him was that perhaps, um, what we can do is reach out to Echo Pool, because I'm gonna have a great lifeguard training program there. And if Parks and Recreation is gonna fund the training for the lifeguards, I'm not sure who's gonna fund, but, um, that perhaps we should go that avenue. Because to my understanding, um, we've been dealing with a trotman family that has invaded the pool. Um, to my understanding, this has been going on for many years. And, and to my understanding, they're not residents in the village. Do that position requires them to be resident in the village?
Uh, I think, uh, if you look at the numbers, it confirms your comment. Uh, we had only four people from the village of Hempstead service lifeguards. Uh, the rest were either on the so-called Trotment Team, which actually was the village of Hempstead team, or they were private members, and their residency was not the village of Hempstead. My comment to George Sanders, now to you and the community, we want to hire village of Hempstead residents for our lifeguards. The pay, pay is forty-eight hundred dollars, I rounded off to five thousand, that's substantial. Fifteen dollars an hour, forty hours a week, eight weeks. This is an opportunity for our young people, but they have to have the lifeguard certification. So we start now, and try to get those numbers out there, and encourage it. We asked the Red Cross to come in and assist. We're hoping that the school district can open the pool, and we have an appropriate program to be able to provide that service. And we hope the school does some of the training in that area as well. This would be beneficial to the village.
Do we have, uh, just another last question, do we have a backup? We know that the Board of Education really doesn't support in a lot of areas. Do we have a, a backup plan in case that doesn't work, if they do not allow students to pool there for training?
Not in large numbers. Now it becomes something where the parents would have to provide services, and some paid swim type programs. So it becomes a difficult assignment. Or if they attend a private school or college, they can allow that free charge. So there's no great backup. Pool accessibility in our village is truly limited, endorse the license.
Thank you.
Thank you. Reginald Lucas?
Good evening, again, uh...
Good evening.
Ladies and trustees. Um, I see we have two chiefs every night. And I thought each chief had their own tour, a young, young midnight. Um, I mean, I'm not, you know, mad about it, but I'd just like to know, uh, how, how's it happening now? On the last shooting, uh, that occurred, it was on Terrace. Uh, I'd like to have an update on that, on the shooting. And also, uh, I'd like to have an update on all the shootings, as, as any progress on, on the shootings in the village of Hempstead. Also, uh, I got statistics that last week that our gangs are growing down. But, uh, I'm, I'm hearing a different opinion from other people that, that the gangs are still around, and they're not disappearing. And also, uh, speaking of drugs, uh, we have drugs in the village of Hempstead. Now, I also like to, uh, recommend that we have at least one fire chief here to tell us what's happening in the fire department, and also, uh, you know, when, when they want to buy trucks and stuff, you know, that's what they show us. So we want to know what's happening on a monthly basis outside the park. Um, Kennedy Park. Uh, they cut the trees down, great. But now it's so hot there that you need some sort of cover. So I think there's gonna be a replacement for the trees that they cut down. Also, it turned into a parking lot for, uh, construction trucks and stuff. How long is that gonna be there, or, or is that the permanent spot for these, uh, construction people?
Also, the people that's not getting paid checks? That they were referring to before?
That, that has to do with the Ingraham Boulevard situation, but you, you finish your question.
Okay, so, uh, you know, let's do something about it. I mean, you know, we, we want to be able to use the whole park, you know, uh, for the, uh, for the Hempstead. So if there's a problem, you know, it shouldn't last forever. You know, it's maybe a month or two, six months at most. You know, I mean, uh, if they ask them for a labor problem, that's not a problem. Okay, uh...
As to the last situations using, being concerned here, we're obliged to the same situation we have, waiting for labor dispute to settle itself. In the meantime, we did an inquiry. They are there, at no expense, in return, they did pay the double expense. Kennedy Park, Fire Department area down on, uh, on Milburn and Weir. And in the long run, we're gonna be the winners if they were to get out of there with kind of infection. And that will be all that's not happening. We're waiting for the settlement. Once it's finished and complete, they'll be gone, and it'll be a better situation. We're encouraging it, but we haven't had much movement. I would agree with you, we're suffering together.
Are we, are we responsible for anybody that have to go away and get hurt, are we responsible for that?
The area that is, that they're parking in is not used by a truck. It's not an area that's used by a truck, that's why it's protected.
Well, I, I know that, but I'll tell you, if, if any person goes over there and accidentally get hurt, are we at fault for that?
They have insurance, we have insurance. You'd have to prove the fact that we're at fault. Everybody assumes that, uh, we unpredictable the results of those cases. I'd like to receive dust about the pilot treatment, if you could do that. And may I turn to the chiefs, please, to respond to the other questions?
As far as the three of us working nine to five, we're administration, administration, excuse me. So just like this administration, we work the same hours they work, Monday to Friday, nine to five.
Uh, you say you work the same hours as, uh, they work?
Right.
So, uh, if all you on the side of work the same tour, I mean, the, the other two tours won't have any chiefs?
That way for us. The chiefs could not get overtime.
That's not the point, you know, we, we need somebody of authority in, in, in those, what you say, hours.
We have, we have gold shields, it's always somebody who controls. I just learned through that applicant, you know, that this is not a bad situation for the chiefs.
If the lieutenant or the sergeant have a, a major problem, they will contact the chief, and they will guide him in the right direction.
Just, just if I could chime in also, just the day-to-day operations of the police department, um, are run by the watch commander, who runs that tour. He's in charge of everything that happens during his tour. Patrol sergeant out on the street is in charge of the street. So us chiefs, we deal with things administratively, uh, running the department, but the day-to-day things that you would be concerned with are run by that lieutenant who's the watch commander. Or if, in his absence, a patrol supervisor will be assigned to that spot. So you always have somebody who's the supervisor, working every tour, that is responsible for that tour. I like the Deputy Mayor said, I believe, um, if he has an issue, we, all, all three of us are available to handle whatever situation he has.
Okay, um, any update on, on gang situation? I mean, yeah, statistics last, uh, two weeks, uh, is it, is it, is it the same, or what? Is it the same or what?
It's still a gang problem, but we have it under control. Since the last meeting, the current stats are down ten percent violent crime from last year. The five-year average is way above that. It's in the twenty percent. It's amazing. And overall crime this year compared to last year is down eighteen percent. And like I always say, it's not eighteen percent of a hundred. It's eighteen percent of hundreds. So the number, the number is big. It's over a hundred for this year alone.
Yeah, okay, well...
We're still trying to eradicate the gang problem.
No, the only thing why I asked that is that there was a shooting at a school. You understand what I'm saying? And apparently, the person that got shot wasn't even a student of that, of the school. It might be like, doesn't even live in the village of Hampstead.
Correct.
So I'm assuming that it was a gang thing?
It was a gang thing, but like I said, there is a gang problem. We have it under control. Did we get rid of the entire gang problem? No.
Fighting gangs is an ongoing thing. There's no community that you can point to that eradicated all gang activity. It's an ongoing thing. It's how you deal with them in response to what they do. It's also gathering intel as they operate, and then trying to be proactive in dealing with them.
No, the only reason why I mention that is that we have a gang task force. And, you know, when gangs expand, it's larger, something like that, I think that's a concern for the community to know that there are all these gangs here. People want to feel safe walking down, out Rain Street or...
Mr. Lucas, you're absolutely right. Your time's up, and I just want to mention one thing. Here's one of our great problems. Casey just referenced, first of all, the school district denies us on the ground. We claim this on the street, and it gets shot. And it's a serious injury that's still bothering them. It could be a lifetime concern. Nevertheless, there's no cooperation. As prosecutors, what is this going forward? And then the police get blamed. It's not an easy sign without cooperation. And that's what we need to ask the community to do. And you can do it without giving your name. It's possible to give us a lead by calling and let us know. And then the police can follow up on it. It would help greatly. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, may I say something?
Sure.
The shooting definitely was on school grounds. Myself and Antonio Kelly responded shortly thereafter. Shots fired and hundred percent death, and it was on school property. Also, I have a question. The chief said crimes is down, but I want to know if incidents of shots fired is that down?
I don't have the overall for shots fired. As I know, since the last meeting, there's only been four shot spot alerts. And that's pretty good.
And I also like to say, if we have a shooting, somebody murdered or something like that, we don't want that here, but can a chief come out to the scene?
Yeah, you asked me that in private, and my answer to you was yes.
All right. Thank you.
I just want Mr. Lucas to know that.
No, I just want to make it clear that it's the school claiming the death on the street. The young man actually contacted me today, and of course, you know him as well as I do. And it's a shame, and he does indeed now live in Rockland, southern of the village of Hampstead all his life until this recently. And probably unfortunately is gang related. And the bad news about it is, instead of when the police resolve the problem, sometimes the youngsters decide to do it themselves. And the retaliation leads to the old eye-for-eye concept. The wall we blind, we don't stop that concept. Okay, Catherine Gary?
My name is Catherine Gary. I live at One and Nine Broadway in Monmouth, Tennessee. As you know, I've been many, many years here at village board meetings, doing research, bringing that information for the community. I'm concerned, very concerned, about what is going on right now regarding the pilot for the Dell, CPK Dell building. And I am very concerned that the mayor continues to say that the IDA says that these projects are not connected, that the Dell project is not connected with the apartment building projects on Main Street. It's not up to the IDA to tell the village of Hampstead whether they're connected or not. The fact is that Terry Winston has done research to show the exact connection. And the connection is that there's a land swap between Renaissance and CPK. And the land swap is what allows for these apartment buildings to go up. So you can't say you're for the Dell project unless you understand that you're also for the apartment building project. They go hand in hand. And I gave out information here with the deeds. Terry came up with these deeds, and they were just filed on September twentieth, although they were executed on September fifth. And the first deed, and I've given it out to most of the people here, the first deed shows that CPK, Peg Renaissance, three point five million dollars for parking lot ten, which Renaissance got for zero, which I say was stolen through a false and phony appraisal process. Then the next three deeds, if you read up, if you count up the amount, it comes to three point five million dollars that CPK received from selling its properties partly to Renaissance, which is the old Mark Markowitz property. That was for four hundred thousand. Another parking lot across the street on Main Street for a hundred thousand. And then the big one is the three million dollars that a group called Concern for Independent Living paid CPK for the property, which is south of the Dell on Main Street. And there is a ninety-six unit apartment building to go on that property. And on the other Dell property, I mean, the other Renaissance property that they bought from CPK or swapped, that property has two hundred and fifty-five units planned, and they have a pilot before the IDA. This is a so-called land swap. But it turns out that CPK bought the properties it has on the east side of Main Street in two thousand and seven, and it paid two point six million dollars for those properties. It now has sold them for three point five million. So Dell has come up with almost one million extra dollars in this sale. And it has given that money to get parking lot ten, paying Renaissance three point five million dollars when Renaissance took this property for free from this village. And this is what is going to happen. This type of thing is going to happen on all the other parking lots that were taken for free also. This is a really serious situation for this community. The agreement that you voted for, it's on Ryan, and the other, and Kerry Pettis, and the other trustees at the time, twenty twelve, the master developer agreement, has all of this information is taken from that agreement. And you signed off on that. You voted on it after a phony public hearing where you refused to tell the people what you were selling. And you had a three-hour public hearing, and nobody even knew what the public hearing was about. And when I spoke and said it was about the sale of all this land, I was ridiculed by the mayor, and none of the board members even stood up to say that I was correct in what I was saying. Now, I'm correct in what I'm saying here also. It's time for this community to open up its eyes, because they're starting to tell you what happened up here. When this land was taken from the Indians, and they were deceived, and can make it look like it was a nice fairy tale, but it was another deceitful taking of land. And now the same thing is happening right here. And you, the people of Hampstead, you are the new Indians. And you need to get together, you need to learn the history, and you need to read the documents. I would love to know, what lawyers advised you, Mayor Ryan and Kerry Pettis, when you were on the board, to sign that master developer agreement? What lawyers advised you to sign it? What lawyers advised you to sign that agreement? The master developer agreement in twenty twelve?
Okay, if you're finished. The situation seems to be repetitive. I hear the same thing from you often. Let me just try one more time to get through on this. If we're going to have apartments that you're concerned about and aren't concerned about, there's a couple of things that have to happen. One is the water sewer availability, and that's still a major issue. The other is the town of Hampstead, I think they would have to offer a pilot. Now, they told us, and we haven't written, that no pilot would be offered unless this board approves it. So that is an issue that should calm your fears. I have a list of all of the pilots in front of them, and some of them they write on, dead, inactive, dead, inactive, dead, inactive, pending village, pending village. So we do have a role and direction to go. And they continue to insist that there is no ripple effect here, there's no domino effect, that because Dell is going to open up opportunities for more taxes and for jobs for Hampstead residents, then necessarily, all these other apartment buildings are going to pop up out of the ground. Now, we agree that if they want to do it without a pilot, without some other type of tax break, if they have an agreement with the Renaissance or X R, that's a possibility if they can satisfy the water sewer availability. But sans that, it's not going to happen. And that is a campaign that we made, and we stand on that. And we have voted against everything. This is the only pilot we have supported. And we have supported it because it's job opportunity for our people without having negative effect on the school district. There are no youngsters involved in the Dell project. There would be if the apartment buildings went up. In fact, I got a call yesterday from Senator Hannity, asking about the possibility of whether or not he should vote for or against something. And I told him against, we cannot afford to bring ten thousand more people into the village. The school district's already overcrowded and creating a more chaotic situation. So the people are watching, and it is going forward on a situation where this pilot, we believe, is beneficial.
And what attorneys advised you to sign the master developer agreement?
The attorneys from Hampstead, obviously. But if you don't mind...
DeSalvo?
She's our village attorney.
Was Deborah, did she advise you this is a sign?
I mean to be apologetic to you, because I'm asking you now. Take a seat, five minutes from order up. And if I could go on Reginald Benjamin, please.
I want to know if I'm correct that you're saying that Deborah DeSalvo is the one that hired you?
I'm telling you, she is our village attorney. They're all attorneys.
Did she advise you to...
Time is up, women have a speech!
Did she advise you to sign that contract?
No, her time is up.
Why won't you answer that question? I just want to know...
Sit down!
I think a better question would be, why are the attorneys everybody else? You've had your five questions.
Why do you refuse to say...
I'm not refusing anything. If you're listening, you got the answer.
You answered the question very well.
Maybe I wanted to answer.
So what? Make it work!
People, if you could just have a little control, please. Yes, Mr. Benjamin, it's your mic.
First of all, just let me say, the fire one, forgive me. Because I'm kind of upset. I'm going to try to maintain my dignity, what's left of it. But let me just say this. Good evening, Deputy Chief, good evening. I want to thank each and every one of the trustees here. I had opportunity to meet with each one of you one-on-one, voicing my concern about the fact that in the village of Hampstead, all we got here is people talking about they do not want any form of development here. I don't understand the philosophy that we have out here. People talking about, well, if you put high-end apartments, you're going to justify the community. Then when you got the same thing, when you start talking about putting affordable housing in the community, people are talking about people coming from the outside. Yet I live in the village of Hampstead, and I know for a fact, if you build affordable housing, the people that live here can come out of their mothers' and fathers' basement. The young people can have a place to live in a decent house rather than living compact in these little small places. So I'm kind of vexed, if you will, about people creating and perpetrating a false narrative concerning the village of Hampstead. We want to see development take place. And you know what? Since the same people come in and say the same thing, why don't I set up something to have the people that live here to talk about they want to have development to take place? And I think I can fill this building up with people that are starving to see something happen. And we just sit here, year after year, day after day, talking about how we can make something fit. I'm totally confused. I didn't even mean to talk about that. I was on a total different page. And y'all, you got me twisted here. And I'm really going out of my way to be nice and not disrespectful to anybody. But let me just say this, please.
I want to say one thing to you, Reverend. The only problem that I have with this whole project is the appraisals didn't come in properly, which the mayor did not vote for the appraisal, people to come in. I did not vote for that, but I wasn't happy the way they came in.
I'm happy to listen.
That's the only thing that I disagree with. Now, development, we have to have.
Hear me, hear me. If something was illegally done, have your business. I'm not getting in the middle of that. I'm simply saying, all we do is sit around in the village of Hampstead and talk, and our people are dying. I can tell you why young people are going to jail and going, are getting involved with gangs. Because they have nothing to do, nothing constructive. I didn't even go there. Let me get off of that too. I am here, ready to go, if you will. But next time we have a meeting at the board, I'm going to bring some people from the village of Hampstead, and I'm going to get some petitions to show you that more people in here want to see something done than the few people that if you say you want to build a birdhouse, somebody going to protest against it. I don't get this nonsense.
How many birdhouses?
I'll leave this stuff alone. I just want to, my people are dying. I want to see something happen. I got twelve hundred people on my list. I really came here to give a good report. My report is that you guys know about the fact that we took our own funds and built a small business contracting center and connected it to build a training center. We had to then, it cost fifteen hundred dollars for each person to go through our training program, an eighty-hour training. We had to raise the money on our own, because I won't even ask the CBA, the CBA for no money, because Lord Jesus. Anyway, we raised the money, and I want to tell people straight up and to the point. We didn't get, we didn't get a dime of the anti-property money. We worked with United Way to get Wells Fargo to donate ten thousand dollars. And we got one of the people that they're putting down right now to match us with the other ten thousand dollars. Somebody else gave us two thousand dollars so that we can do this training. As of October tenth, we're giving our first serious comprehensive training in the construction trade for residents in the village of Hampstead. Fifteen slots. And our goal, which I need your guys' help on, my goal is to transition them out of the training program into work. And I'm going to say to all of you, thank you so much for allowing something to take place here. We appreciate that, because those people now turn around and say, we will take the... Y'all have a good day, that's my thought.
Inviting anybody? Anybody?
Okay. I just want to caution everyone, it's a beautiful thought that all of the people who are living substandard homes get the first crack at the houses. The factory medicine board has admitted that. We have to be very careful. And we're not really talking this point, I don't believe, about jobs. We like to talk about careers. So I even know there's a possibility of doing something for a short stint. It's not good. We love the job program we put together. We were there for the opening. Glad to be there to see what's going on the next time you invite us. And we'll support that. I've tried to do what I do with jobs, CADD school and UPS. I always reference your name, so, because I know how hard you've worked for how long. And I've seen your lists. And it's real, there's no question about it. As for affordable housing, it really needs to be regional in concept. This cannot be a village of Hampstead only developing situation. And of course, you realize sewers on Main Street date to nineteen twenty-two. Without development, we still need more water. So there are some concerns we have to have to put that in place.
Just want to apologize. Let me say this to you. When I say affordable housing, I have a lousy, oh, thank God for it. I have two... I have a two-bedroom apartment. The two-bedroom apartment that I have costs as much as the average person being in mortgage. Twenty-two hundred dollars. That's mortgage. My sister have a four-room down south and she only paid eleven hundred dollars with terrible credit. So for real, this is what I'm really telling you. My sister.
Strike that last comment.
Second?
Second. You want to stay here?
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.